First item on the agenda is citizen comment. There being no citizens in the council chambers to render comment, we've satisfied this element of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the January 3, 2017 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, oh, do I hear, uh, no, any discussion? That's what I want to say. There being none, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. If the ayes have it, the motion carries. Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. Every year, the charter for the Planning Commission requires the election of officers. There are two elected offices and one permanent office, which is held by the Director of Community Development. The two elected offices are that of those of Chair and Vice Chair. So I'd like to open the floor to nominations for the Office of Chair. Dennis.
I would like to nominate you Doug to continue as Chair.
Do I hear a second for that nomination?
Second.
Thank you for the second. Do I hear any discussion? All right, the name Doug Nugent is placed in the nominations for the Office of Chair. Do I hear any other nominations?
Okay.
There being none, I offer the name of Doug Nugent for the Office of Chair. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Doug Nugent is the Chair of the Planning Commission for 2017. Thank you Dennis, thank you Scott. Now, the Office of Vice Chair. Do I hear a motion to, or do I hear a name for the office nomination to Vice Chair?
Nominate Mark Ornschall?
Not the first, to look for the pronunciation.
I had to look at it.
Do I hear a second for the name of Mark Ornschall in the Office of Vice Chair?
I'll second it, second up.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of Mark Ornschall for the Office of Vice Chair? Wait a minute. Do I hear any other names for nomination to the Office of Vice Chair?
Going once.
There being none, the only name in the office nominated for Vice Chair is Mark Ornschall. All in favor of Mark Ornschall for the Office of Vice Chair, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the nomination is in place and approved. Mark Ornschall is the Officer, the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for 2017. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, I think that satisfies item three, four on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan. I invite comment from the city staff assembled at the presentation table.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Planning Commission. So, the goal of tonight is to final your memo. There is some urgency to this because the joint meeting is next week. The agenda has been sent to the council and part of the agenda packet has identified what your top priorities were, but that's kind of without the background context. So my goal is that you would, to send this out tomorrow to council. So hopefully you will finish that tonight and I can then send out this final memo. At the last meeting, there was no disagreement on what the recommendation would be. There was a lot of discussion about the context. And the discussion of the context focused around how can we streamline this, three or four pages of context? How can we simplify it? And how can we provide data and information which provides a complete picture? So those were the, that was kind of the, what I heard from the Planning Commission is let's try and do that as part of that memo. Chair Nugent provided us, thank you very much Doug, for providing your edits and we made those edits and those are included in your packet. What we did though is, in light of what we heard from the Commission about streamlining and being consistent and providing a complete picture, we kind of went back in and reread through it and made some additional, very minor tweaks to that, which are highlighted in green in the attachment in your packet. So I just wanted to kind of point out that that's the reason for the two memos and why you have them. And then I would also, Dennis, right before the meeting handed out some, do all the Commission members have this?
Yes.
Dennis, you're, yes. So in addition, Dennis has handed out some additional ideas here for sort of clarifying and organizing the context part of the memo and making it clear. So as part of your discussions, you have the opportunity to consider Dennis's suggestions as well as the staff suggestions in the memo. So that being said, we would like to kind of open that, I guess, back to you Doug. Is there any questions or how you want to go through the edits that were included in your packet?
Well, I think first I want to take up Commissioner Olson's proposal and then we can talk about what we now have, our two different drafts for the memo next week. So Dennis, why don't you describe what you've handed out to everybody?
Basically, it was a little more flushed-out introduction fashion because I wasn't sure when reading through it that the City Council will understand what we're trying to do in the organization, just from simply looking at it. And so, without trying to change any of the details of the content, the intent is, was just simply to put a little bit more into the introduction. And all I've really done is, if you look through it quickly, is just say, this is a memo that introduces the stuff and then briefly outlined the main parts. Then, under background, I thought appropriate to put paragraph headings, which I just underlined. And so you have council instructions, which basically is to use the same language as in the draft cover memo, except that because it said in particular, in April of this year, I put April 2016, since we're now doing it. And then, the proposed plan paragraph, again, is just simply an introduction, but that's new language. And then similarly, the talk, what I call topic complexity, was an introduction to all of the bullet points we did. And then you would just follow through with whichever version of the, of the memo description we do, but you would have sort of bolded headings, one called Plan Organization, or Matrix Organization if you like, and the other was Priority Strategies.
Okay.
And the only intent was to make it hopefully quicker for them to understand what we're trying to do.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on this? Dennis, can you help me understand, where does the second section heading Proposed Plan pick up?
Well, basically, read from the top and it'll tell you to the first bullet that's all new. Right on the first page of the document.
I mean, could you point to it? So where you say Proposed Plan, the Commission spent, that's all new?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And then Topic Complexity, that section's all new?
Yes. And it's all going right in the front. Is Proposed Plan going right here? No, no. It goes in background, council's dropping new, Proposed Plan is new, Topic Complexity is new, it gets into the bullets.
Ah, I see.
I don't know where the Proposed Plan might go there.
That's new, that's new content.
New content.
Oh, oh, that's a whole new.
So the existing content starts essentially with the first bullet, where he says actions that Kenmore has already undertaken? That's the existing bullet on page two.
Sorry if it's still confusing.
That's okay, that was just good clarification. Carol, did Carol, Dennis get one of these copies, paper-based?
I have one.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm fine with that organization, that seems logical to me.
I agree, I think it's, um, appropriate.
Welcome to raise one, I think we have agreement, but go ahead if you'd like to formalize it.
Well, I believe we do the changes proposed on the document in front of you, okay?
I second that motion. I'm sorry, Lori, you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, I just had one point of clarification, sorry about this. So, Council Instructions would sit at the front of the existing first paragraph under background.
Correct.
And then a new paragraph would be entered called Proposed Plan.
Correct.
And then would all the following language be struck until we got to Topic Complexity and then we'd start in with the bullet points?
Um, Topic Complexity is new, which, which precedes the bullet points.
Okay, but those other paragraphs would, would be retained?
Well, we, the, the first paragraph, which is Council Instruction.
Yeah, I, yes, but what about the second one that starts, in addition to the council's direction?
That would disappear.
That would disappear, and then the next paragraph that starts, because there was limited input, that would disappear, and then it would be Topic Complexity.
All it could do is add introduction and adding some headings called Plan Organization and Priority Strategies.
I, I understand that, but it's the question of those paragraphs in the middle that I'm trying to sort out, and it sounds like those would disappear.
Well, when you say in the middle, I'm not suggesting that I'm changing any of that content, I'm just doing the beginning. I think talking about the rest of the content would be what the Commission will talk about now.
Okay.
So they would, from what you've said, then it means that the, the language would stay? You're just putting in an additional paragraph and the rest of it would stay? Okay.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Ending our yellow and green conversation.
Right.
So I think we understand, everybody understands what we're talking about. I think I do. Lori, do you think you do?
I do, uh-huh.
Scott, Mark, Mike, I think we do. We're talking about headings and some introductory sentences, yeah. But the essence of the substance is staying the same.
Literally.
Otherwise, there's only a couple of replacements.
Right.
So that, I second the motion that Dennis raised to adopt this proposal on this page. Do I hear discussion? No discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Abstentions, none. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you Dennis. So now we have two draft memos. So when I wrote the memo that I sent out to everybody, and I appreciate Lori taking my changes and putting them into a redline draft, that's much easier to understand. Hopefully, people got that with enough time to look it over and decide if that's what the mission was after the last meeting. We all kind of gave input at the last meeting, I know I spoke the most, that's one reason I offered to write it, try and make it simple because we've been having this back and forth quite a bit since early December. So I thought I was, I mean, I added some more specifics, which I took, by the way, from the Comprehensive Plan, Kenmore Comprehensive Plan, on affordable housing. But they were the points that we had been discussing at the last meeting. So I think it reflects what we'd wanted. The staff is saying, well, we've got a new version and it's more streamlined. I think, I'm just, I'm a little more confused by it, and the other thing that kind of concerns me is, there was a box in the previous draft from the staff. It contained a great deal of data that focused only on low and moderate income residents and households in Kenmore. That was described as local conditions, but it didn't reflect the majority of households and housing situation in the city. So that's what I wrote, what I did, and I said at the last meeting, I'm willing and okay, and think we should, take a few sentences from that box. But it goes way into one minority segment of this community and distorts what the whole picture is. And I don't think there was any objection to that. And in fact, I did that, I took a couple sentences out, I talked about low-income households and the, the cost burden that they bear with housing. And, so I, I thought what I wrote was, was what we had agreed on, so I was surprised, there were no objections to it after I sent it out by email. So I was pretty surprised to see all these changes in the form of what the staff calls clarifying and rounding out the memo that I sent around. So my preference is to stick with what I wrote last week. I think it is a better reflection of the city than what the staff has done, which is put a lot more of the other stuff we didn't want in, that focuses so much on a small segment of the community. Although I will say, if there is something that I simply misstated, that's simply wrong, then of course, let's fix that. But I don't think there was too much of that.
Well, the, the big difference I saw is between the mean and the average, and you cited the mean and they said, no, it's the average, so I mean, that's.
Right, that was exactly what I was thinking of. Actually, I think I said average and they said median. And those are two different things, and the reason I said average is, the chart that I was referring to didn't say one way or the other, and I had to guess. So, it looks like I made, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, because, because it's, you know, I think the median is what you want to have in here.
Right, yeah, which is fine. Well, the, the key is that I was taking a number from a chart that I think Arch provided. So whether that chart said, was, was supposed to be the median or the average, that's the only number we have that I know of.
Well, do we know for sure that we, it's the?
We checked and it was average.
Average, that's why we.
Why would Arch use an average when they know that that's not really, I mean, it gets skewed by the big-ticket items?
I don't know that we have other information.
The, the, medians are not available to us other than what the Multiple Listing Service publishes month to month and annually, and they use, as some of you probably know, some customized geographies that don't allow us to just report Kenmore by itself or the other cities that we work with. And so, for the time being at least, the best data that we have that allows us to report Kenmore and other cities, King County and so forth, is using the, the averages that they have published.
But we have the median for incomes, it appears, right?
Yeah, I took that from a different source. I didn't see it in any of Arch's data, so I went online and found, I could pull it up here.
That's a different thing.
Well, yeah, but, but that's the initial, what the staff did, used the median on the, on the low income and, for the figures, right? For Kenmore, you had that for Kenmore?
Right, the income information.
Yeah, and that comes, it comes in a median, unlike the housing prices.
So, so we, so is that?
Then we're comparing the average to the median and we don't really know what the median is on the.
Well, we, we, right, we know what the median income is, we don't know what the median housing price is.
So it's.
Right, and so Doug.
Does that, does that diminish the value of the, the comparison then?
Um, not really. Well, yeah, and here's, it, it would, but what I, I took a lot of that out, trying to simplify this, where they were confusing medians and averages. And what I wrote here was just comparing Kenmore to other Arch cities, in terms of its housing prices. So if we compare apples to apples, Kenmore's average to the other Arch cities averages, I think it's an accurate comparison. And I'm not comparing average house prices to median income, so I don't get into that, but I do say that Kenmore's median income relative to the county is 88,000 versus, I think it's 71,000. That was based on what data I could get, maybe there's, we got a better number somewhere. As you'll, if you look at my draft, it says Kenmore's median household income is approximately 88,000. King County's median income is approximately 71,000 for a family of two. The 71, I think I got from the Kenmore Comprehensive Plan, and they just said it, did it by num, size of household, so I don't know if the 88 is for a family of two, because I just saw that on a website, and I could pull up that source if you like.
And, and another question I have, you know, I just, I don't want to create too much confusion on this, but there's a, it says in the, that box that was presented, 40 percent, about 1,800 of the jobs in Kenmore pay less than $25,000 a year, which can afford housing costs up to $625 a month, and it says few apartments in Kenmore have rents at, at that level.
I, it, it would seem that if you've got a, a two-person household, does this discount the fact that the other, significant other might be working too? Or do we know? Is this?
Is this counting the $25,000, is that a two-person household income?
It doesn't matter. It's simply saying that if your household income is $25,000, that's worth $25,000.
Yeah, but it says 40 percent of the jobs in Kenmore pay less than $25,000 a year, and so what I'm saying is that, the people who have those jobs, do they have a significant other that it may be making more than that or the same amount so that they can, that household can afford, you know, $1,250?
That's a good point, that's a, that's a fair question. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't project to that much, it's, it's not making that, it's not making the claim.
Sure.
In that direction, it's simply saying that if you have one income in the family, that's, that's quite enough, those people, those 40 percent of those jobs, if they're the only income in the family, that's what they're getting.
If that, but we don't know whether there's.
Don't, don't.
I, I think it's just a little misleading that way because there's, I'm sure, you know, a lot of people will have a spouse that will, you know, have a lower-income job just because they want to stay busy and, and the other one is the bread, they're bread with, that's all.
But it's being taken out, so it's not, it's a moot point.
That's my proposal, but it's.
Because there's a lot of, it's not the only one.
Yeah.
There are a lot of things in here, and I could point to a couple others. 82 percent of Kenmore's senior renters are cost burden or severely cost burden. Well, that sounds pretty terrible, but it's not 82 percent of Kenmore's seniors, and a very small, smaller than the general population, percentage of seniors rents. So in fact, I think we have fewer cost-burden seniors than the population at large. But to read that, you'd think, if you're not careful, that's a real crisis among seniors. Well, it's no worse than among everybody. So, you know, when you focus on just one small segment of the community, you're going to get terrible numbers, and you could look at any community and look at their low-income people and say, you know, they have real crisis problem. I'm saying they are, in my version, I said that of the low-income people, 87 percent are cost burdened. They are bearing a very difficult burden, but.
Yeah, but we don't know what.
It goes on and on and on about that, and you tend to ignore the 74 percent that own their own homes, and the fact that Kenmore has a much higher median income than the rest of the county. So.
I, I think I'm, I'm the one who adjusted the figures on the detached, single-family housing. And I felt that certainly it's, it's fair and appropriate to acknowledge that the housing costs for detached, single-family residences in Kenmore are the lowest. I thought that that was perfectly appropriate. I think it doesn't tell the whole picture if you just say that everybody can afford, everybody who wants to have a house and lives here now and owns a house could afford that house. That's why I thought it was important to say, using affordability guidelines, actually, the detached, single-family housing here is not affordable. I, I mean, I think that's a fair statement, it's, that's a true statement, and I don't know why we wouldn't say, you know, detached, detached, single-family housing in Kenmore is not affordable, if you make a certain, I mean, that's a true statement.
Okay, first of all, I didn't say detached, single-family housing was affordable, I said their costs, they bear less risk of housing appreciation because their costs are mostly fixed when you own a house. There are people who own houses who are cost-burdened.
Right.
There are people in every community in this area that are cost-burdened, even if they own their house. And a lot of people choose to be cost-burdened because it's worth it to live close to the job, or it's worth it to have the view, or it's worth it because they can put their mother-in-law in the apartment, or maybe they can rent it, the ADU we talked about, and offset their costs. But if you looked strictly at numbers, you wouldn't know that.
So, and I've just, it's good to recognize that there are people that make $25,000 a year in their household and they, they have no chance on that, and I understand that, but, you know, having these figures, I think we should recognize that, but not put in stuff that is, you know, it looks like, oh, this looks really bad, you know?
Well, I, I think, you know, I'll tell you what my perspective is. I think the pendulum has swung the other way. I think that the Commission at the last meeting indicated that, that there was too much focus on affordable housing, that it was skewed to make it appear that there was more of a problem than there actually is. I felt that some of the material in this draft did not present the complete picture, that in fact, yes, for current homeowners in Kenmore, affordable housing is not an issue, but you can't necessarily have more homeowners in Kenmore at a certain income range because they can't afford it. That's the complete picture, it doesn't say one way or the other, whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, but that's the complete picture. So that's what I was trying to get to.
But don't you think that information fits better regionally? Because it's not, it's not a unique situation to Kenmore, it's a piece of the regional puzzle, which is why Arch's information is important to handing this memo up to the We're not trying to solve the affordability problem because we won't be able to do that as a city. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to create a housing strategy that will best meet the needs of the citizens who live here into the future. So, you know, we're looking at our comprehensive plan, we're looking at what we, you know, came up with as our most advantageous items to have in that comprehensive plan, and now we're coming up with a prioritization list. And I think to only look at, say, the senior housing picture or the, you could call them disenfranchised people that live or could live in Kenmore, I mean, we have to be careful about this language because I think that creates a problem in and of itself. But I think as a city, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, and I think we did that in creating this matrix, is we're trying to highlight the areas that we believe will be the needs that our city needs to meet, and in what order they're going to do that. And I think some of the information that has been included in this kind of introduction clouds out a little bit, because it makes it look like, well, if we don't hurry up and do something about this, you know, it's going to be horrible. Well, maybe we could flip that and say, you know, this is an important aspect regionally, and as a city, we want to be prepared for that, here's the priorities. So that's why this really detailed pieces of data out of context don't always give a clear picture, and maybe they don't need to be there. They can be part of the Arch's, you know, presentation, but maybe not so much this memo highlighting the matrix that we created.
Well, I, I think obviously it's the Commission's memo and you can have in it what you choose to have in it. I, I personally felt that the picture was not as broad as it could be. That was the perspective that I tackled it from.
Well, I disagree with Carol a little bit, and I think we need to know what's going on in Kenmore. I think it, I, I appreciate it being in there, but I just, you know, I was, I just want to make sure that if we're not sure of the facts and how they, the implications, I didn't want them to be construed one way by the tenor of it and, and, but it's good to, we recognize these people. One of the things that I think we should point out is, is the mobile homes that we have here, and it's a unique situation, and I think it should be preserved and, you know, in one of our strategies, because it's really, I, I had a guy who did some work for me live in one of those areas, and they were actually neat, low-income housing for people, and it's, and it's a really neat neighborhood that they have in there, and, and so. And so it's, it's.
We should have some local statistics on, on this type of stuff, too. I, I think that's important. I just don't want that the, to be an inference that we've got, you know, oh, my God, eighty-two percent of the seniors are overwhelmed with, you know, not being able to make, you know. That's just, that's the tenor of what I want to express.
We're, we're on page three, right? Those are the, sort of the paragraphs at issue. Am I?
You're asking me?
Yeah, between, I'm trying to flip back between.
Right away on page.
Between your version. I'm talking about your version and the staff version, and what is most at, at issue that we're discussing? It's page three, right?
Correct.
Well, am I?
We should go to attachment two then.
Well, attachment two is the one I have. Has Doug's version superimposed, I suppose, with the staff version?
Both.
Do you not have that?
Yeah, I've got it. I just, I just think that would be the best one to go off of if we're discussing it.
Right, because I think they're both included there.
Doug's.
And I printed out the, I've got hard copies.
Doug's has got, is attachment one and, and.
So I'm just going to share my perspective on, on a couple of the paragraphs. The one that starts Kenmore detached, single-family housing, I'm looking again at the staff version and Doug's version. And I actually like Lori's ad at the very end. She says, "Current homeowners." I think that's a fair point.
What page?
It's page three. It's the second bullet point. Kenmore, it starts Kenmore detached, single-family housing affordability relative to that of nearby cities. That's that paragraph. You see it?
Yep.
And I think it is fair to point out that the single-family housing would not be affordable for those of moderate income or less. However, I think what's missing from that is what percentage of the population of Kenmore is moderate income or less, which I am not actually sure about. But I think a lot of these figures are kind of lacking that perspective, and I think Doug was sort of getting at that, like, what percentage of the whole population of Kenmore are we talking about here? To give the council some, some idea. So if you say would not be affordable for those of moderate income or less, those people comprise X percent of the population. To me, that would be a fair thing. I thought that was okay. And then going to the next bullet point about local jobs and housing. I think there is a point to point out cost burden. I think the last three bullets, though, again, are, are kind of confusing, and you could just keep the first sentence or two. More than seventy percent of Kenmore households with moderate or lower incomes are housing cost burdened, half are severely cost burdened. I think you could just leave it at that if you want to have, as Lori said, a, you know, a little more complete picture. And again, put in, like, what percentage of the population that is of Kenmore's, what, twenty-one thousand residents? So that's my perspective on how to include some of the balance Lori's talking about without getting too deep into a lot of this data that could easily be kind of misinterpreted or misunderstood without context, so. So that's my, that's my thought.
That's fine. And it's interesting, you mentioned, hey, what percentage of our community is low income or moderate income? If you look at my draft, page three, below that paragraph where it starts.
Oh, twenty percent are low.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we were thinking exactly the same thing. I think the first question is, how big is this group? So that wasn't anywhere in the staff's drafts up to that point.
Right.
Looked in the, the comp plan, and I said, okay, we're talking about twenty percent. Now, that's not moderate income. The reason I left out moderate is I couldn't find that number. I found low and very low income at twenty percent in the comp plan. I didn't find moderate. I wasn't sure what that extra number was. And my other problem with moderate is, it's a pretty confusing word because you don't know if that's middle income or how low it is. It's just too vague. Now, it may bump the number up from twenty to twenty-five. It may, something like that. And the cost burden may go up or down a little bit from eighty-seven.
Yeah.
But I think that, even if we left it as is, it tells the story. There's a segment, and it's a pretty big-sized segment in this community that's really struggling to make, to pay for housing. So eighty-seven, you can't get much higher than that. So I, I think the big picture is there. I mean, like I said, we could tweak it if we got moderate income numbers to throw in there. But I think at this point, with five days, six days left, maybe it makes sense just to try and stick to the big picture.
Don't you think that that detail is highlighted in how we actually arrange the matrix? Because that's the goal, is to try to give the council some ideas to why we strategize things and laid out things in the matrix in our recommendations the way we did. And hopefully, if there's questions that come back, that statement would, maybe it's not specific enough. But that, but that's our recommendation is, if you do, if you think about it, if they follow those recommendations, they're going to drill down and get public comment and, you know, secure a more detailed strategy or, you know, set of priorities as they move forward. This is just a beginning place.
So, you know, there, Mark and Scott have talked about, well, maybe we can keep some of this, maybe not. I think the first question is, do we want to go through the staff alternative proposal and consider pieces that we might want to put into the draft that I sent out? That's the first question, and if we do, then we got to.
Fair to do.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was suggesting to you, that we, yeah.
But with the idea that, you know, there's some stuff that's problematic, and I pointed out one of them.
Right.
You know, and so, you know, is that, we have agreement on it? Two, three, four.
Okay. So let's go through the staff memo and see if there's things in there that people, the majority of the commissioners want to add to my, the memo I sent out.
We have the low, low, moderate number, if that would be helpful, if I can track it down. So it's twenty percent low and very low, and then fifteen percent is moderate income. And moderate income are those who make from fifty to eighty percent of median.
Thirty-five percent is the moderate and lower.
Correct.
And where does that information come from?
It's from the American Community Survey, which is done by the Senate Bureau. And so if you, if you have a two-person household, that is.
Per person, correct, not at a household.
It's a household.
It is a household.
Right.
And suggest, we adjust it for household size.
So is this information based on the 2010 census?
No, the American Community Survey is done every year.
Okay.
But it's.
But it's from two thousand.
Five-year averages.
Right.
So there's not going to be a lot of difference if, if, from the ACS that comes out in 2012 and the one that comes out in 2014 because.
They're averaging them.
Five-year periods overlap. And household income doesn't change that fast, or distributions don't change that fast.
Especially the last, it's been quite stagnant.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so are we proposing to change on page three, the second bullet point?
Doug, should we start at the beginning?
We could. I, let's go with it. Go ahead. Scott, you want to start?
Well, I mean, this is just kind of boilerplate, so I don't think it's, all the, I mean, I don't have a strong feeling. I guess.
I may.
Yeah.
The, the two things that may be at issue here is, but Arch was the only advisor that staff invited at the commission meetings. Didn't we have one, I, I don't know if they got him after it began, so I can't really address that.
Did we have anybody else?
Yeah.
We didn't have staff present anybody else. Arch is the only, I'm going to call it an agency, that staff has presented to the commission at these meetings. We did have a citizen comment from a public affairs director of the Washington Rental Housing Association in October. I asked him to answer some additional questions, so we did get that input. But he wasn't staff's, arranged by staff. We just happened to be lucky enough that he decided to come by and talk about it.
There are some changes in wording in, you know, Doug, at the bottom, Arch member cities also operate as opposed to manage. I, I.
Why are we arguing over that? Are you telling me a material difference between operate and manage?
No, I just, I just wanted to.
No, I'm not asking you. I'm asking staff. Why would you change that word?
I, I think that we have tried to explain that Arch is considered staff for the city of Kenmore. Arch is the city's housing staff. That's been very clear to the council. That Arch has helped us, for example, do the housing element of the comprehensive plan. They help us whenever we have to negotiate some sort of housing agreement with a private developer, for example. And Arch operates the Housing Trust Fund. It's managed by the city councils of the Arch communities. Arch doesn't decide who gets the money or how much money they get. That is a decision that is made by all of the city councils that are members of the Arch organization.
I think Mark's question was, or my, and my question was, the word operate was substituted for the word manage regarding the trust fund.
Correct.
Is there a material difference between those words?
I think that management implies that you have control of how the money is spent and where it is spent versus operation where you are merely implementing the direction from the managers, who are the city councils of the different Arch communities. I think a manager is different from an operator.
It's not worth it to me to wrestle over something so subtle, so I guess I'm okay with operate. I disagree with going on inferences here. If we looked up definitions, I don't think there'd be a material difference. But in the interest of time, I'm willing to go with operate, the Housing Trust Fund. On the other point, though, that Arch is considered staff, that's A, new to me, B, I think it's very confusing for the public. I don't know why council would consider Arch part of their staff. I mean, I know why you think they would. I, I think it's misleading. Let me ask Mike, who, you know, when I think of the things we've heard, like Arch is not a legal entity. It is so just odd for a lawyer to hear that and hear things like, well, they're really part of the city's staff. There are clearly some very blurry lines here. And so I thought maybe one way to know exactly what Arch is is to ask, who's paying your, who's signing your check? And I'm not talking about how much or getting impersonal. I'm just, who's signing the checks to the people who work for Arch?
The city of Bellevue.
Pays you. So you're getting paid by the city of Bellevue.
City of Bellevue does all of our back office things. They do our payables, receivables, our IT.
Are they doing it as a, though, a third-party vendor-like, or are they doing it because they own Arch?
It's part of the inter-local agreement. I, in fact, I would refer you to the inter-local agreement. It would probably, as a legal document, might help answer a lot of your questions.
Okay. But I think that's, and, and let me ask this. Arch, does that have a lease, office space?
We leased office.
Office space, right.
You lease office space?
Yeah.
Okay. Who signed the lease? And on behalf of whom did he or she sign it?
Not sure.
But that's the kind of thing that tells you who's, who's Arch, you know? Who's paying the money? Who's, who's responsible legally? Do you have an insurance policy? Who's named in the insurance policy that covers Arch? And all those are things, from what I'm hearing, that are not the city of Kenmore. So I think it's highly misleading and inaccurate to say that Arch is part of the Kent, city of Kenmore's staff. But the bigger point is, Arch is the only, whatever you want to call him, I'm going to call him an entity that was brought in to advise us on this issue. I know staff, you know, followed up and worked with Arch and that kind of thing. But I don't see a material conflict between what Arch has told us and what staff has told us. It sounds pretty consistent. So the point we're making here, I'm trying to make, and I think we had agreement on this last week, was this is the perspective we've had to work with. And we've had in many meetings concern about, well, we'd need more if we're going to get into more detail. We're okay getting to the starting point with just Arch. So I, you know, to say Arch is part of staff, I'd rather not do that because I think anybody who doesn't assume that first, and I think it's a misplaced assumption. But I, and I think anybody else not familiar with this would be highly confused by that. And I think the point is the same, that Arch is the one, the sole entity that has been telling us, you know, what it knows and what we should think about in the, with affordable housing.
But they're doing that as, as part of representing the city. They're not doing.
Yes, so does the city attorney, but it's a different entity. So does all kinds of outfits. I mean, Kenmore's a, what, a contract city? That's a phrase I read a lot. You know, when the mayor or the city manager, city manager is probably a better example. We contract a lot of the services out. I mean, the police department is King County Sheriff, right?
Yeah, we have a contract with King County.
You could say, well, they're part of the staff. Well, they're really the King County Sheriff. So I'd like to keep it accurate and say, you brought in Arch, you want, you know, and just to say you brought in Arch, I don't think confuses things very much, and they've told us the perspective they have on this issue.
So if, if we are the equivalent of the sheriff's office or the city attorney or what, what's the significance of?
I'm just saying I think it's accurate the way it is. We don't, I think it's more confusing to say the staff, including Arch, because I read that and go, what does that mean?
But what's.
I haven't run into you at City Hall.
What's the significance of that?
Can I, can I answer that? It's more philosophical because we're a representative government. And, you know, when I first walked in here, Arch, who's Arch? And it took me a long time to figure it out. And it, it doesn't hurt to identify and, and, and who they are or what they, what they, you know, where they came from. I think that's, that's good to know because then you get, you have more faith and trust in what they say. I think it's better for Arch to, to be defined in the long run, truly. I, I think it's, you know, it's open government. So I don't think there's anything wrong with it, and especially, I think Doug's point is that, that, you know, we want to know where, where we're getting our advice from. Oh, it's Arch. Well, who's Arch? Well, it says right here, and, and, oh, yeah, they're a legit organization supported by, you know, twelve cities.
Well, I, but I think the difference is, and I'm going to shut up after this, is that you're talking about characterizing Arch in a way that's different than every other city does and every other dealing that we've had with those cities. And I, I consider that to be a mischaracterization. If it's, if the meaning is fuzzy to you, then I don't think, I think we've done everything possible to clear that up.
Hey, I'm not the only one. And I, my, my sense is, in addition to Scott, a lot of other people go, what does that mean?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it, the third party wouldn't really, so I don't think it hurt. I mean, if we know what it is, it's, it's a, it's a, what, this is what I think it is. And tell me if I'm wrong. It's a, it's a, an organization put together to advise cities that are of the compact of what's going on in the, in the communities pertaining to housing. And it's supported by, I don't know how many cities. And they're an independent, you know, organization working for all these cities, I guess. I mean, that's what I think it is. Is that wrong?
That's, that's mostly it. I think Arthur explained it more eloquently last week to explain the role of Arch and what they do and the role of cities. I, I think we're perhaps arguing over.
I think we're perhaps arguing over semantics here. I mean, I think the main point is to say that we use Arch and we can say Arch and staff, staff and Arch, whatever that is. And I think the main point you're trying to make here is that you wanted additional advice, and your recommendation is, is that you get more advice as these things move forward. And I think we've clarified that, so I hope we can move past this and not get stuck on this one little sentence here.
So I feel like this would be a good time for us to make a nice motion. Do we receive this information as what we intended to include for council and for a public document so that if somebody reading this and who may want to participate in public hearings in the future, it provides them with a little bit of background? Is that what your goal was when you added this?
About Arch?
Mm-hmm.
Paragraph about Arch. Yeah, in fact, we talked about it at the last meeting.
Yes, I do remember that.
Right, so-
So it's in there, so what part of it are you not thinking is good?
The different, I, what part of what the staff rewrote or what part of what I wrote?
Well, I'm-
I'm comfortable with what I wrote.
Okay, so, so are you saying that this highlighted yellow couple of bullet points you're uncomfortable with? I thought that's what you actually submitted and the staff created that as an addition to our working document. So I'm looking at-
Staff revised it, so I must be confused. So let me tell you what I understand.
Okay.
We met last week.
Correct.
During the other meeting, we talked about making changes. I said, well, I've got some changes in mind. Here's what I have in mind. And I went through moving this paragraph, cutting that paragraph, changing this paragraph.
Sure.
Talked about it. I got direction. Yep, go for it. I said, I'll write it out, so we're not, we don't have much time left, so I'll write it out, maybe that's the easiest thing. Next day, couple of days, I wrote it out, sent it out, said, let me know if you have any comments. Nobody comments. Then we get our, our package for this meeting, and there's a whole different draft that the staff has made. All these changes, red, yellow, green, highlights, stricken. And so I could, I, my sense with the Arch thing is that it's much more confusing, what the staff has said about this than what I wrote. What I wrote, I think, was what my understanding and the commission's understanding was, after a number of meetings where we questioned Arch being the sole advisor on this issue, and how to explain that to the council. So that they were, they and the public knew that Arch makes money or gets money from Kenmore and 15 other cities. They have this relationship with these other cities. I think they have an affordable housing perspective, a very low-income affordable housing perspective on this issue. It's one of many perspectives. I think it's a necessary perspective, but insufficient. And that was the point I'm trying to make in the paragraph I wrote, trying to keep it simple. So I was describing a number of facts. So except for changing the word manages to operate, I think it works. I think to say Arch is part of staff, to take out the reference to, strike that Arch was the only advisor staff provided to the commission meetings, to take that out, I think is misleading.
But it's stated above-
To take out the assets of the trust fund are donated by member cities, including Kenmore. I think, I don't know why we would take that out unless it's wrong.
It's already stated in there that Arch was the only advisor, so that's why we took it out, because it was repeating what was said in the prior sentence.
I think we're talking about different sentences. There was a sentence where I said it was the sole advisor, and then there was a sentence that I said, we got information from other sources, but they were the, Arch was the only one who appeared at our meetings as an advisor from staff. So that's a little different. The only other advice, the only other advice we got was maybe 10, 15 minutes from one guy at the RHA, Residential Housing Association, so.
It makes, it makes no difference. We can leave it in. It's just repeating what you said earlier. All we were doing is taking it out because it was repeating it.
Like I said, it's a little different.
So if it stays in, fine.
We're going to disagree on that. I think it's a little different, but that's not my bigger point. The bigger point is there's a lot of stuff that's taken out in the name of clarification.
I, I don't think it was a huge amount of difference. I tried to be true to your original ideas. I think Mark has already called out the information about cost burdening and suggested that that be taken, but I think if you read it, I don't know that there's anything too concerning there. I mean, we obviously, and Doug, we've talked to you about the fact that we don't share the perspective about Arch's role with us. We consider Arch our housing staff, and we would say that Arch is our housing staff, joined with your planning staff, to present this information to you. I don't think that the information is biased. I don't think the information comes from a perspective that's not part of the staff perspective, and I think that's what is being implied in this paragraph.
And you know what? The council understands what Arch is better than the commission does, so let's let them say what they want to.
I tend to agree. I think that, you know, the city's council members actually are the ones who are giving the city manager permission to use Arch as a consulting service. You know, they're, they're available, they're basically out there, and when the staff needs to pull on their resource, they just do it. It's not something they have to write a new contract on. It's just part of the makeup of our city to have that resource available. And I think the goal at our last meeting, unless I'm, I really missed it, was your motivation in clarifying who Arch is was to make sure that anybody prepping for a public hearing would know that Arch was our resource where we got this information from and that it was primarily, other than participants in the public comment, was the, the information we used to create our matrix. So I don't, I don't understand, you know, with the couple of bullet points that do highlight Arch, what should or shouldn't be done? Can you clarify that?
So why don't we, to kind of help move along, if we agree to go back to what, we take out the staff changes regarding Arch, we leave that in there for right now. So then the only additional changes in green then were what Mark started to pick up on page three.
I'm fine with that. Can I just make one last point on Arch? They took out the exhibit that I proposed we attach to the memo which describes, which shows the housing trust fund contributions from the member cities and amounts. I think it's important to illustrate what this fund is, how big it is, how much Arch gets from member cities, including Kenmore. Because I think that's at the root of what I called and still think is a conflict of interest for an agency that gets contributions from a city to come in and then advise an independent planning commission on housing policy, because they have an interest in getting maximum contributions, and the advice is colored by that, whether Arch thinks so or not. And as I said before, as an attorney, there's no way I could represent a client under those circumstances, where I got some benefit and financial benefit from the outcome of my advice to that client. So that's, I think that exhibits an important addition.
Well, I would just comment that there's, in law, there's always conflicts and I think people overstate the conflicts. But it doesn't hurt to put in what's facts. You know, if it's a fact, then how could it hurt anything?
I agree.
Was there a reason, the way that we struck out that exhibit?
I don't think it's relevant, quite frankly.
It may, it may not for most people, but it's, like I said, it's a fact and, you know, facts are, are, can never be-
I mean, it's, it's fact, and we have that information. I don't really know how it really pertains to the housing strategy. I mean, if we were trying to simplify things and streamline things, I don't really see the relevance.
True. All right, do we need to discuss this? Are we okay with the exhibit in? Are we okay with the Arch description as it is? I think the staff has suggested we leave it and move on. Arch and the staff have said the council knows better, so let's just leave it in.
Your version, their, I'm confused.
My understanding is the staff is saying, go ahead and leave in my version of the description of Arch with the exhibit. Are we good with that?
My only concern is if, if we are not accurately portraying the situation, just, I want to be careful that if the city council has a totally different viewpoint, we may discredit ourselves with them. I don't know. But let me give some maybe alternative language that, I don't know whether it'll help or not. If you start your paragraph where you say staff provided the commission, I guess I would thinking something like, strategy options and regional planning information was presented by the consultant, Arch, and then go on pretty much with everything else that you got.
I'm fine with that.
Do you want me to try and read that again? Since I did not type it up.
Please.
Okay. That bullet point would start, strategy options and regional planning information were presented by the consultant, Arch, and then you would go on-
Can we, can we just say Arch? Because they're not a consultant. Can we just say Arch, provided by Arch?
Well, I guess I was heading to the legal part, because I look at them as a consultant because they're not an employee.
We don't have-
But you think, well, you don't think you need the word consultant then? Okay, so just say by Arch.
Arch is a program created by a local agreement. It's owned by all of the local cities.
And we go on to say that. I'm, I'm fine with taking consultant out. Did you pick it up then?
Strategy options and regional planning options were provided by Arch.
Were presented-
Presented.
By Arch. And then you sort of pick, you pick up the definition of Arch and, and the rest of that paragraph. And you did have that change from manage to operate? Anyway, one thought.
I'm sorry, Dennis, I'm finding that a little confusing.
I'm sorry, I'm just-
No, 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 that's okay.
I'm not reading that. My suggestion, okay, is, is that we say city staff and Arch to some, in some fashion. So we have city staff and we have Arch, and we're not haggling in our language about, you know, their respective roles, which I don't think we're ever going to come to, you know, conclusion here tonight. So I'm, I'm just trying to simplify it and, and hopefully clarify it. I don't know if it can ever be clarified. I don't think we're ever going to come to, like, you know, a meeting of the minds on this. So that would be my suggestion, just to say, where Doug has city staff and Arch were the commission's sole advisor on this topic, and just go from there with Doug's language. So that's my suggestion.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so we're working off Doug's version right now, and it would read, city staff and Arch, a regional coalition for housing, were the commission's sole advisors on this topic. Arch presented the commission, and then it goes on with all the same information. Is that what you had in mind, Mark?
That was what I had in mind, yes.
And then what about that second, the paragraph that starts, but Arch was the only advisor that staff provided at the commission? That was the second sentence that we had eliminated because we thought it had already been stated. But if you want to keep it in twice, that's fine, too.
No, I don't, it shouldn't be in there twice, no.
That makes no sense.
And you reiterate it in the next bullet point? Is that retained in the one that is? Yeah, I see that. Because there's very limited input, that paragraph would remain correct?
Yeah, in fact, at least I think so. I think that was what Mike Vanderline was so pathetic about.
It just, I mean, what it does, in my mind, what it does is it, it introduces where our resources came from in that first staff with Arch, but then it reiterates our concern that this was really our only resource, and we want that made very clearly. And I think that, that, that paragraph should remain correct.
No disagreement there, I think.
Okay, well, that sounds good then. Are we all in agreement?
I think so. It might be worth reading it.
Okay. So if, if we're, I don't know which version we're working off, because now we're mixing and matching. Okay, so if, under background, the second paragraph would be replaced with Doug's bullet point, a third from the top on page two of Doug's version, it would read, city staff and Arch, a regional coalition for housing, were the commission's sole advisors on this topic. Arch presented the commission with some information it prepared from other sources, including certain focus group results and statistics. Arch is a partnership of 15 East King County cities to assist these cities, including Kenmore, in developing housing policies, strategies, programs, and regulations with a focus on affordable housing. Arch also operates a housing trust fund, assets of which are donated by its member cities, including Kenmore, and are used to financially assist people looking for affordable housing. Then the outstanding question is whether the housing trust fund exhibit, did you guys decide to include that exhibit or not?
I thought we did, but probably everybody speak for themselves.
I say include it.
That's two, three, yeah.
Okay, so a summary of annual contributions from member cities to Arch is attached here to his exhibit blank. And then the next bullet point becomes the next paragraph, because there was very limited input from housing sector stakeholders, and then the staff version took out other than Arch, because there was very limited input from housing sector stakeholders, so you need to decide about that, those words. The commission feels it's important, and then it goes on, just as Doug had written it.
I'd say take out other than Arch, because it's already been said that they, it's repetitive.
I disagree.
Well, is Arch a housing sector stakeholder?
That's why I disagree. I think they are absolutely a housing sector stakeholder. That's their purpose. That's their, that's their raison d'etre, and that's why they have a housing trust fund. And they're not just an advocate for lower-income housing. They are, you know, an agency that pays for, people pay for lower-income housing. That's a stakeholder.
I think what they really do is they help cities manage projects that are created to address those needs in a given city, and they do it in a variety of ways. So to just say that they pay for affordable housing on behalf of the renter or the individual is kind of misleading because-
I'm not just saying that.
Well, I know, but that's kind of, that's where you keep coming back to. It's kind of-
That, to me, is the biggest example of how they're a stakeholder. There's money- That's, that, to me, is the biggest example of how they're a stakeholder. There's money.
There is, but if you looked at, if you looked at their budget and how they actually spend their money, the, the majority of their budget goes towards a different kind of more strategic and higher long-term goal that cities participate in, so they can create a niche for affordable housing. But you're right, it's not going to kill us to leave it in there. But I just think it's kind of redundant, because we just spent a whole paragraph talking about Arch, highlighting what they do, making sure it's really clear. Why do we need to include, say, other than Arch?
Because they are a stakeholder, just so there's no confusion. Not only have, I mean, the staff wants to say, oh, that is a morphous entity and part of our staff, and they really exist by virtue of some agreement, inter-local agreement. But they are, regardless of that, they're a stakeholder. Whether you want to say because their purpose is to advise cities, or because their, their purpose is to hand out money, it's both. But any, either of those things makes them a stakeholder, and I think using that phrase is an important way to look at the concern we had, I think, and I had in particular, about a stakeholder being an advisor, a sole advisor on this issue.
I, I think we're going to have to disagree on this, Doug. I mean, your, your interpretation of Arch's relationship with the cities and what they're representing is very different than what Arch and how Arthur explained it last week. So I don't know how we can get past that. I think we're just going to have to agree to disagree at this point.
I, I agree with Carol and, and the staff on this, because you've put the facts in and the prior, and, and you've got where all the money's coming from, so to make an inference of it, you can take it from the, the facts. And, and it's clearly that they're the only entity that, that put input in here, other than the Kenmore staff. And, and so I, since you've got the facts, you can, you can infer what you want to infer, but I, I don't, I, I do, I agree with Carol on that one.
Another way you could word it, which would accomplish your goal, we have Arch highlighted in the first paragraph. In the second paragraph, we could say, "Because there was very limited input from other housing sector shareholders, the commission feels it's important that a specifics, as specific strategies are further evaluated and developed, there be greater stakeholder outreach and public involvement." I mean, that's the whole point.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, let's do that. So it would say, "Because there was very limited input from other housing sector stakeholders." So basically, the "because" paragraph just reiterates the idea that Arch was our sole resource at this time to make this matrix. And it really should be very clear to the commission what, what we're doing, you know, including the Arch information. And I don't think it's a, I don't think it negatively displays Arch in a, other than making the point that there are other housing sector stakeholders.
You have agreement? Next? Next, I mean, inviting any other commissioner. I'm, you know where I stand on this. I'm, I'm willing to stick with what we got. But I, so that's why I'm inviting anybody else who wants to propose adopting one of the staff's changes. I, I think so. Are there things above this paragraph that we want to change?
Well, I made my points on page, you know, page three, so.
Yeah, so.
The commission is on.
Is that the next big paragraph to take on? Is it the one that starts Kenmore detached, single-family housing?
Yeah, that's the next big one.
What do, does anyone want to change from my draft?
I did, again, we've got that of jobs, and this is on which, one, two, third bullet point, of jobs in Kenmore, 40%, about $1,800, pay less than $25,000 a year, and it cites that 600, that they can only afford $625 a month.
That's the sec, that's the next paragraph.
Yes, so I, I did, that's kind of misleading, because we, we, you know, the $25,000 a year, we don't know whether that's somebody in a two-income.
Family. Right, so here's, and I, pardon my interruption, but I think the most efficient way to do this would be go bullet by bullet. Okay, start with mine and say, which of the changes the staff is recommending do we add to mine? Instead of going with theirs and saying, oh, this is, this is one I got a problem with. So let's just start with mine as a starting point. Staff has said, oh, we've only made minor changes to what Doug wrote. So let's use that as a starting point. Is there, and let's go with that paragraph of mine that act, that starts, "Kenmore housing affordability relative to that of nearby cities." That's the heading I gave it. And staff revise that. But let's start with mine and tell me, what of the changes staff made do you guys want to adopt?
Well, we, we now know that it's not the median, it's the average.
Right, so let's change that. And that's going to read, second sentence, "The housing cost data provided to the commission per n dated 2013 showed that Kenmore's average price for housing was 37% below the average of," and I guess we've got to change median to average again, "below the average of the average housing prices for 14 other Arch member cities."
So it's consistent?
Right.
Do you want to include detached, single-family, or is that?
No, because.
So what does it read now?
It's more than, this paragraph talks about more than detached, single-family house.
Okay.
I think it's a misleading heading.
Okay.
But the figures were for detached, single-family housing.
One of the figures was.
Well, the ones about affordability relative to other jurisdictions.
I, okay, but I think those are the only numbers we had.
Right. Again, it was just clarifying the point.
Well, we're not saying one way or the other. It just, the heading I gave it, "Kenmore housing affordability relative to that of their cities," this is the best measure we have of it, so we're putting it in there. I'm not saying it doesn't, doesn't include.
Maybe in the second, second sentence then, was below, showed that Kenmore's average price for detached, single-family housing. That's where the point of clarification would be.
You lost me.
Okay, so the title of the paragraph, "Kenmore housing affordability relative to that of nearby cities." "The housing cost data provided to the commission showed that Kenmore's average price for housing," and that's where you would say detached, single-family housing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that data clearly does not encompass condos?
Correct.
The problem is, I know our rents are lower as well, we just don't know how much. But I think that's, I guess, all we can say, because that's all the data we had.
I say if it's factual.
Yeah, no, I hear you, Scott, and I, that's why I'm not challenging it.
But I wouldn't necessarily, the, the figure, because we've got an average figure, and I don't want to put emphasis on the average because we don't know how it's skewed by the higher-priced homes on the lake.
But that's true of all the Arch cities.
So it's consistent amongst how we're comparing yourselves.
Right, the defect is the same for everybody. So all I'm trying to do is say, here's Kenmore compared to the rest of the Arch cities.
I understand, I think you're going to agree with me on this one. I say we don't put it at, they're, they're putting us at $450,000, $415,000 in Kenmore as the average.
Right.
And we don't know what the median is.
Right. No, but that's something they added, so unless you want to add it, the presumption is it's not in.
I, I wouldn't put it in.
You would put it in.
Would not.
Right. But it's already not in, unless somebody brings it up. That's, that's the way I'm trying to approach this.
So basically, what you're doing is you're working off your paragraph, and we're reviewing the recommendations that the staff has made. And we're, we're going line by line to see if we're going to include those recommendations or not.
Right, I think it's more efficient than going to the staff and saying, I don't like that thing.
Because, because none of us commented on the things that you wrote, but staff did. So now we're going through and saying, are we sticking with your version or their version? Okay.
Or some other version?
Or, or collaborating right now on the fly. Again, I, I think that the changes that staff recommended were those minor clarifications. I think if you read through it, you'll see that we changed average, median to average. We talked about detached, single-family. We said it was the lowest for the 14 other Arch member cities. There's, I don't want you to think that we made wholesale changes. We clarified some of the points, certainly. So are we, have we completed that first thought about the average detached family housing? The average price?
I have, but, so I think the first three sentences talk about that comparison. Thirty-seven below, 37% below the Arch average price for single-family detached. Is that the phrase you want to use, Lori? For detached, single-family residences?
Detached, single, is what it says. Oh, it does say, "single-family," though.
Detached, single-family dwellings. So let's put that in. And then that's the 37% sentence, and then the next sentence says, in fact, the status showed that Kenmore's median housing price, and I guess that has to change to average, because it was taken from the same graph. So that becomes average. Kenmore's average housing price was 13% below the next lowest-priced Arch member city, Bothell, and I guess we have to change housing to detached, single-family dwellings.
And 17% was the number that I.
I'm sorry, 17, yeah, I understated it.
Okay.
Those are consistent with the previous changes.
So now we're going to move on to income?
Right, now we move on to income. The staff took it out. If others feel that's important, then we'll talk about it. I think it's helpful.
So just for ease of reading, should there be a new bullet point to start the section on income?
I'm fine with that. Relative housing? That's a good suggestion.
I think, I think that's relevant information, the median household income to include.
Okay.
But for ease of reading, it might be nice to leave it underneath that bullet point, but just create a new line, so it doesn't all read together, so it's a new thought. To me, that, that's much easier for someone reading this, to separate those ideas. Mm-hmm. Because it's basically supporting the, the picture about housing affordability.
Right. Yeah, and that's why I put it in, not to elaborate, but there's two elements to affordable housing. It's how much does the housing cost? How much do people have?
Yeah. And you go on to talk about that with the low-income people too. But I think if we separate those ideas out, it, it makes it more understandable. You knew what you meant, but someone reading this might not know what you meant.
I'm with you. All right, and then we have the local jobs to housing ratio. Want to break that out too? Go ahead, Mark.
I'd like the last part about the housing, I don't know that we settled on. I liked the staff's suggestion about current homeowners and using affordability guidelines, detached would not be for purchase to those of moderate income or less, which comprises 35% of Kenmore households. I'd like to define moderate income or less, or if you want to, you know, use some other metric, I'm fine with that, but I did think that was a fair. At the end of what was the second bullet on that page, which I guess now is the third bullet.
No, it's still under that. We're just kind of creating reading breaks.
Yeah, you lost me, Mark, because we're still on, I don't see that in the paragraph that we're focused on.
Because their housing costs are largely fixed, and then staff put current.
No.
It's the last sentence in Doug's version.
Oh, okay, it is in there.
Yes, it's above, it's right above local jobs and housing, that's why I, I interjected there.
Depends on which version you're working off of. So everybody needs to be working off the same version.
So, Mark, looking. Well, okay. So what part of attachment two do you want to put in attachment one, Mark?
Okay, I'd like to put, okay, because their housing costs are largely fixed, you got that one, right?
Yes.
In your version.
Yes.
Comma, "current," which is added in the staff's version, and then go back to your version. "Homeowners are much less vulnerable than our renters to increases in housing costs." Then include, I would advocate, include the staff's next sentence. "However, using 2016 King County affordability guidelines, Kenmore's detached, single-family housing would not be affordable for purchase to those of moderate income or less, which comprise 35% of Kenmore households," is what I would propose. That's my proposal.
I appreciate that. Here's my rebuttal. First of all, there's no such thing as a non-current homeowner. Anyone who's a homeowner is a current homeowner. You either are or you aren't. So I don't see how that helps. Secondly, the use of the word affordable and cost burden are loosely interchanged here. They're used almost synonymously. There is a big difference. Cost burden means an X, it's a very specific thing. It's a statistic. We all know what it means. Affordable is not. Affordable means you can, you have the money to pay for something. These people have the money to pay for their housing. It's just a too-big a part of their budget. And as I said before, there are people who choose to be, in fact, a very large percentage of homeowners choose to be cost burden because there are benefits, and it's worth it to them. As I said, you're closer to your job, you can house your mother-in-law, you're next to your friends, you like the school district, it's worth going over 30% of your budget to have those things. Fourth, maybe I'm the third, I don't know, but just because you're cost burdened doesn't mean you can't afford it. Not just because of the definition of afford, but we've talked about this, not only in the housing context, but in the TOD context. We're talking about density near transit hubs, because people who don't have cars can afford more for housing. So you can be cost burdened and still be in a comfortable budget. That's why we have a TOD district in this city, so that we're encouraging people, and we have a lesser parking ratio for microhousing. And the same is true of the vast majority of surrounding cities. So I think to say, "What people can afford would not be affordable," is highly misleading.
I appreciate that. Lori, can you elaborate what you, what you meant by would not be affordable? What, what were you trying? Doug's had a good point about the definition of affordable. I, I, and it's a little squishy.
I was using the county definition, and so what the county does is they always set out guidelines for determining whether something is affordable or not. It is based on not paying more than 30% of your income toward housing. But using those county-wide definitions, a housing cost of $415,114, an average housing cost, would not be affordable to those of low or very low or moderate income. I think it's clear that for very low and low-income individuals, that they wouldn't be able to afford it. Remember that moderate is 50 to 80% of median, so it's still less than median. And I'm, I'm using those guidelines because those are the guidelines we have, that say 30% to feel comfortable, 30% is the number.
Based on those guidelines?
For purchase, for a house purchase.
The 415 is an average. There are homeowners who can buy houses for less than 415, or else it wouldn't be the average, it would be the bottom.
Correct.
So to say, "Low-income people can't afford the $415,000 house," which we've already decided is not a helpful number, because it is skewed by very high and expensive houses, is misleading, because some of them can afford to buy a detached, single-family residence. It just wouldn't cost 415, or they would decide to be extremely cost burdened, and it would be worth it to them.
There's probably some percentage out that would maybe make that choice, but it, what's the message? What message are you sending?
This is inaccurate, that's the message.
That single-family homes in Kenmore are affordable to very low and low-income individuals. That's the message. I, I, that's not correct. Well, how can you help but infer something different, Doug?
A reasonable mind could. All we're saying are facts here. Scott, very helpfully, keeps saying, let's stick to these facts. Is it a fact? Is it not a fact? That's all I'm saying. Now you throw in words like affordable, and I think quite incorrectly. Now you throw in words like affordable, and I think quite incorrectly.
Well, it's a defined term in King County. That's the number I'm using.
Well, it's fine, it's also a defined term in Webster's dictionary, and it means that what you can pay for. And there are people who are paying for housing even though they're bearing a heavy cost burden.
Well, then maybe we don't have any affordable housing issues in the city. Is that where we're headed?
Well, see, this is getting ridiculous, and this is, I think, a product of your perspective. Arch has a perspective, staff has a perspective, it's one perspective, and you keep coming back to it, and that's why we have a difference here.
Well, I'm trying to present information to show a range of perspectives. Not a single perspective, but the full picture on sort of both sides of the issue.
Well, I thought I did that, and that's why I took parts of, more than a few sentences, from the box and elaborated on those-
Right.
-in the draft that I wrote.
Right.
So I know we're trying to tweak balance here.
I know, and, and we were trying to add to that balance.
Right, and I disagree. Because I think even on its face, it's not a fact. If you want to go back to, oh, here's the King County considers-
Well, it is a fact.
Depends, I disagree. I gave you a definition, a literal definition, we could all look it up on the web, of what affordable means. It is not what you're saying here. But you're saying, oh, but if you go to King County and how they define it, then it is what I'm saying here.
But, but we have to remember that one of the reasons we're doing this exercise is because as a city in King County, we have some growth management guidelines that we are working with, and that's why we needed to leave that bullet point in this introduction, which you also wanted to get rid of, and I said, no, it's very important that we leave it in. And you did, but I think we need to work, basically what I see that we're doing is we are taking the big box that had a lot of information, you rewrote it, and staff is wanting to include some additional thoughts from that box that you did not include in your rewritten part.
I, that's, because I told everybody, I think this has too much low income focus, and I'm going to take a couple, I think we should take a couple sentences from it.
Okay.
I did more than that. So that shouldn't have surprised anybody.
Okay, but what I'm seeing is that we're actually a lot closer to being in agreement than we were when we took the whole box out and you rewrote it. I think what we need to do is go through this paragraph and this bullet point and make it so that it is readable and it tells a story that both sides of this equation can pass up to the council that we all agree on.
So I heard Mark proposed keeping it in, so is the consensus to leave it in or take it out?
I started this, I'd like to at least make an attempt to, you know, move on. I, I agree, the word affordable presents all kinds of problems and issues, and I think, I think the point that Lori was trying to make here, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, is that not everyone can afford Kenmore's single family housing. Is that what you were basically trying to say?
Correct.
And I think, honestly, that's, that's a valid point to make. Perhaps the wording here could be changed. And I'm trying to think of something that might be amenable. If, you know, you say the affordability guidelines are thirty percent of your income on housing, is that, is that the?
Cost burden. Let's not mix up the words, please.
Okay, that's fine. Perhaps then we need to incorporate this part here, down here, that's cost burden. I think, maybe we, maybe we don't add this, but maybe we include something to that effect in, in the cost burden segment. I do think there's a, a place for the point that is being made, that not everyone, in fact, thirty percent, is that right, thirty-five percent? Basically, at their income level now, would have difficulty purchasing a home based on these, on these guidelines. So I think the larger point is still valid to be made. I'm sorry, I don't have any rewording, I'm-
I think you're right, Mark, on that. Put it in a different bullet point, because-
Perhaps the cost burden one, or you get?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's where it should belong. You know, I mean, I think there's two things going on here. As far as this geographic area, city, city of Kenmore is a pretty good, affordable city.
Well, and the point is made.
And it's always, it's always been known as that, too. And, and, but, we've got to recognize that their people can't afford it, you know, especially with the, you know, the, the low wages some of the people are getting now. So, so that's, we could have a bullet point on that, and, and those are the people we want to help, I think, in this, in this situation. We don't, we don't need to help the, I mean, we want them to do well, but we don't need to help people who are buying currently in their homes and that are working at Boeing and, and not, and they're not making twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and, you know, I mean, that's, I think that's what Doug was trying to do, is show, we got, we got a bright spot here, but we've got these other people that we want to take care of. So let's put that in a different bullet point and, and, and recognize that, and that's something, that's what we want to help. I think it helps focus, it focuses what we want to help, rather than contrast it to-
And it, and it actually does support what we did on our matrix, which is what this introduction is trying to tell the story, so that when they look at the matrix, they understand that our recommendations are based on the facts that we're trying to tell the story in. However, we could arrange these facts in a way that is a little bit clearer, because even in our paragraph that starts Kenmore housing affordability relative to nearby cities, that paragraph, we kind of flip back and forth between facts about median housing prices and income. But I get why we did that, because you have to look at income to decide if something's affordable or not, correct?
Correct.
But our conclusions seem to, in the staff version, seem to support the second bullet point, which starts in Doug's version, still, there is a segment of Kenmore's population that bears a significant housing cost burden relative to its income. So I think being able to highlight that and perhaps move that statement. However, using, you know, 2016 King County affordability guidelines, Kenmore's detached, single family housing may not be affordable to purchase for those of moderate incomes or less. Instead of making a conclusive statement saying it, it is not, it may not be, but it really depends on which section of that income strata they are in, even if they're in the moderate. Because I think our goal is to show that overall, we're somewhat more affordable than other cities in Kenmore. But we want to highlight that we do have a segment of our population that currently does not look like they're going to navigate through the coming changes, and as a city, we want to make a provision for them. And I don't know how you can do that in the introduction, other than just breaking it down into sentences that tell that story, because the matrix does tell that story. Those decisions that we made in the matrix are based on the story we heard and how we think we want to arrange that information.
So my hope is, and I think if we can focus on facts, we can most accurately convey this point. So we've already talked about, and Mark and I agree, I think maybe the most important number here is, well, how big is this low income or moderate income group in Kenmore?
Right, that's a key.
Start with that. Okay, now let's look at this group. Look at Kenmore as a whole. Let's look at this group. What's that percentage? It sounds like it's thirty-five. Let's call it thirty-five. As I said, moderate, the word moderate's very confusing in this context. It's such a vague word, it's confusing in almost any context, so we'd better define it. So families of moderate or low income, and you could say very low, but, you know, it's pretty obvious what you're talking about, moderate and low, are defined as blank. Eighty percent or less of King County median income. Then of this group, what percentage is cost burden? If you want to say very cost burden, go ahead and say, what percentage is very cost burden? And as Scott pointed out, we've got a mobile home community which distinguishes us from a lot of other cities, and so I put that in there. So I think it's helpful to put that in there. It's certainly not going to solve the problem, but it does distinguish us. So, and there are some other things that staff has proposed, and we can talk about those. But I think as a, as a model, hopefully what I've described, it's factual, less to wrestle over, which is, I think what we all want, is less to wrestle over.
What's, what's your, okay, well, I'll, I'll back off from that, that particular point in that particular bullet. I do think the cost burden, are we, are we, I'm probably jumping ahead here. Are we done with what was the second bullet?
Done with, are you talking about the cost burden bullet?
Yeah, well, I was going to go down to that and try to incorporate that, as Scott suggested, but are we done with?
No, I'm not saying we stop. I'm just saying, let's start with that, and maybe, as I said, I think there are a few more points that others might want to add to this that staff brought up. So, Mark, that might be a good place to put in what you want to borrow from that previous paragraph. But I want to do, I'm proposing that we do it very factually. Instead of saying affordable, who can afford, may not afford.
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with that.
We use numbers.
I'm fine with that.
Well, so for, on the first bullet point, we're taking out, and we're not including the last sentence here in green. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, okay.
And then, and then I don't know about the second bullet point, I don't know. The only thing I know about that is that I'm not a fan of the last sentence of that, which is, which, of jobs in Kenmore, forty percent. I don't think it's conveyed.
Right, so I'm not saying let's take staff, I'm saying let's pick out from the staff draft what you like, so let's leave out what you don't like.
And then we get down to the third bullet point, and I think that's where we've got to work on, cost burden.
Okay, but we're really on the second bullet point, which is the segment of Kenmore's population that bears a significant housing cost burden relative to its income. And then we could describe, you know, what that is, but telling that story in a very uncomplicated way, just using facts, seems to be more descriptive than, to me, but how, how-
I'm confused on the second bullet point. Isn't that the one that Doug's version, version, local jobs and housing?
No.
No, that's the staff's. That, they took things that Doug wrote, and in the green area is what they would like it to read as, whereas Doug's is a little bit less complicated paragraph.
It starts with the word still.
It's attachment one on page three.
Especially where the word still, comma.
Oh, I, there is a segment.
Right, and so-
Oh.
We had broken out jobs, housing ratio as a different topic. In Doug's version, that's incorporated in the first bullet point that you guys have been discussing. Right, so that's the only difference.
Different paragraph for what it's worth, it does move into a different point.
It does, it does kind of highlight a different part of what motivated us, and that is the income strata. I mean, we've talked about the housing costs, but now we want to talk about the income strata. And then the final paragraph focuses, I think, on the most heavily cost burdened part of that information. So, so did I hear that you want to break out the jobs, housing ratio as a separate paragraph, using this information from your version, but just in a separate paragraph, so that that first bullet point would talk about affordability, it would talk about median household income, and then it would conclude with the homeownership rate and housing costs. And then the jobs, housing ratio would be the next bullet point.
I'm kind of afraid to try that, because then we have to go back over it and agree, okay, where does the bullet point start and stop? So maybe we just leave it in there, and then we move into still, there is a segment. I mean, I agree, we could break it out, it'd probably be great to break it out, but I,
One of the ways-
Five and-
One of the ways you can, I think, make it clear that it's a separate idea, but it's still under the housing affordability relative to that of other cities.
Leave it alone.
Yeah, you could just leave it alone, or you can just drop it down a line, and it's still under the bullet point, but it's a separate sentence.
Yeah, I like it.
Because in the-
Done that with one of them.
We did that with one of them, we could do it again in the next one, in that, in that ratio. Just drop it down a line, keep it under the bullet point.
All right, so I think we're at, still, there's a segment of Kenmore's population, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Mark, you had some specific ideas about that.
Well, yeah, a couple things. At the beginning, I think we should maybe define that thirty-five percent of Kenmore's population is classified as moderate or, and moderate and lower income. So, because we go into moderate or lower incomes without defining-
Right.
Who, what, you know, what percentage of the, the folks are in that, in those categories. So I think that's an important thing to put up front, that's my perspective on that.
I think we'd have, want to say moderate or low or very low?
I don't know, you need to say very low, I mean, isn't it?
I don't think you do, but-
Does low include very low? I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying down here, you also say twenty percent of households are low or very low income.
Right, I'm fine with low, I think people get the point.
I, I did, I did too, yeah.
But you're, you want to say approximately thirty-five percent of Kenmore households are moderate or low income?
Right, and more than seventy, more than seventy percent of those households, oh, I don't know, those households are housing cost burdened, that is-
Well, first I want to define what moderate and low income means.
Okay, that's, that's fair, yeah, that's fair.
So then we have-
Using the facts, yeah?
Right.
So we'll find, define that.
So say moderate is X and low is Y.
Right.
Yeah, that's fair, okay.
And then we go, I think, to what you want, right?
Right, I, I liked, more or less, our, our housing cost burden, it defines what it is, ha, almost half are severely cost burdened, and then these figures are slightly greater in Kenmore. Well, I'm open to that last sentence, whether it is included or not. I don't think the part about the cost burden effect for renters, senior renters, or majority of young adults needs to be included. I think we made the point, you know, about the population at large, is my view on those three, that are in the staff version.
So when it says, these figures are slightly greater in Kenmore than the rest of King County, so-
These figures of, of cost burdened?
Yeah, see, this is another paragraph or, or a sentence that gets way from the data, and we get into subjectiveness. These figures, which figures, slightly greater house light, the rest of King County. Now we're not talking about arch cities anymore, which is where we're focused our relative, because we're not just any city in King County, we're on Lake Washington, and we're in a more expensive area, which is a point we already made. So I would strike that. In fact, despite the relative affordability of Kenmore compared to neighboring cities. So then you've gone back to the arch cities, so-
I think you wanted to strike that whole section.
I do.
That was Mark's original proposal.
That's the figure that starts, the sentence that starts, these figures?
Right, it was the stuff that was pulled in from the original box.
Yes, I would like to strike that.
And so it just reads, it just goes into defining moderate and low income percentage in more than seventy percent of our cost burden, half are severely cost burdened. And that's all that it would include in that cost burden bullet point.
And again, you can arrange that information under the statement. Still, there's a segment that can be a sentence, and then you can break out the actual numbers. And it's much easier to understand it than it-
Here's where we're going.
Yes.
Right.
Because it helps to clarify our thinking based on facts. This is what the matrix came out like. Okay? Are there any other details in that?
Mark, anything else?
In that sentence, no, no.
Okay, that bullet point?
God, no, no.
We're good with that bullet point? Okay, and then, Mark, you said with some of these other bullet points the staff has put in, you think we've already made those points?
You know, about the, about the detached- You know, about the, about the detached, single-family housing, I guess the, the point about housing cost burdened, I guess it's sort of implicit that, yeah, that. I just would like to see some mention that, yeah, even though, you know, we're, we're sitting pretty good in our single-family homes, not everyone can afford them. And I, I guess I'm, I'm honestly, I don't have an idea how or where to include that. I think it's a valid point, but, um, kind of at a loss as to where it should go. It's not very helpful, but that's.
I, I don't think that it's really a helpful statement.
Okay.
Because it, it isn't a fact, it's a, it's a conclusion. But our matrix highlights that our focus is, this is where we want our city commissioners to focus. And it does really include a pretty comprehensive look at the residents that live here. And as we grow with our comprehensive plan, you know, the numbers that we think are gonna come in here, we wanna keep these things in our matrix forefront currently, so we can help to accommodate that growth and accommodate affordability. But I think making a statement in the introduction about that doesn't really help.
Um, so then there's this last, I, well, that's it for my, my draft. Then I move on to the public transportation. Do we wanna add anything from, I think there was some additional language the staff put in here.
Well, that's what we need to look at next.
Uh, well, let's, I wanna be sure we're on the same point.
Okay.
I wrote, note however, that Kenmore has a relatively high number of manufactured homes, and staff has kept that. Close to three hundred, which sell and rent for less than site-built homes, so they've kept that. And then they added along with a number of subsidized multifamily housing units, I'm fine if we add that. But either way, do we have any?
I think it's okay to put that in.
They're doing, there's more than just.
That was part of our.
Manufactured homes helping out the really low income.
Correct, and we, we.
They're subsidized homes.
We actually talked about that as being part of the potential incentivization of future development. So I think it's okay to leave it in there.
Then the, the staff proposed, although Kenmore has a higher percentage of affordable housing for low-income households than most other King County.
East King County.
Yeah. Why is it most? 'Cause all I did was compare us to arch, and we are the lowest. It's not more than average or something, it's the lowest. So, I'd like to say than all other arch cities, so now we've got facts in there, instead of these vagaries like most in King County.
Well, the, the change was.
East King County's same.
Kenmore has a higher percentage of affordable housing than most other East King County cities.
Haven't even looked at East King County as a, as a percentage.
We, we did, though.
No, we looked at arch cities.
Well, that is East King County.
Oh, it's fine, so let's say arch cities, arch member cities.
So, we have a higher percentage, we don't have more units.
Right.
We have a higher percentage, so that was a staff recommended change. And then the question was, do we have the highest percentage? And from the information that we looked at, I think there was one city that had a higher percentage.
Was that an arch city, or?
Um, they're, they're all arch cities, the ones that we compared.
Can you tell us why you wanted to include that in the storyline? That would help me.
Well, I, it wasn't an inclusion, it was a clarification.
Okay.
That we have a higher, we don't have more affordable housing units, we do not physically have more affordable housing units, we have a higher percentage.
Right.
That's just a difference, that's a factual difference.
I think that's a good point to include.
And we don't have the highest percentage, we are very close to having the highest percentage, but we do not have the highest. So I said than most other, rather than other.
How about all but one?
Right, well, I can go back and calculate the numbers again and tell you where you are on the list.
Like, the highest except for one other city.
I think we are, but I don't have the percentages written here.
Well, then, okay.
So I can double-check it if you wanna say higher than all but one.
More accurate than most.
All right.
And I thi- you know, I think the other thing that we kept in mind when we were working on this is our population relative to the other East King County cities is relatively lower. I mean, we're a smaller number of people living here, but that's gonna change over time. I mean, it's not something we really wanna add to the introduction, but it is something that I think the city needs to look at, 'cause we don't necessarily have to take all the needs of the ca- of King County and make 'em happen here.
I don't think that was ever the intent.
I don't think so either, but sometimes I think people, when they hear these discussions as private citizens, they wonder why the city's working on it, because it's like, we only have twenty-five thousand people, and look at, you know, Redmond or, you know. So anyway, that, that's muddying the waters, forget what I said. I'm thinking out loud, but I'm thinking about those public hearings that are gonna come up.
Okay, so I think we have agreement on this. And then the last one was the city has a relatively low percentage of multifamily housing compared to other East King County cities. If that's true, which I didn't see in our materials, I think that's worth putting.
It's in the comp plan.
But that relates to the density point that we've been focused on with our recommendations, so I am pleased to see that one. Any else, people wanna throw in, or on that one? Are we good on that? I think we're good, right?
Yes, we are.
All right, so now back to attachment A. We go to the transportation paragraph, which was not changed, so there's agreement there. And then there were slight changes to the tenant protection paragraph. My preference would be to keep the tenant protection paragraph as written.
I, the only change, um, that I had made was to take out the word.
By contrast.
By contrast, 'cause we weren't contrasting it with anything. And then I just added a little header, tenant protection measures, 'cause you had headers in other places. But we don't have to do that.
Well, it was in contrast to, you know, a policy we endorsed, which was public transportation. And then the next thing, by contrast, here's a policy we reject, which is tenant protection measures. But if you think it's confusing.
In contrast to transportation, in contrast to transportation?
Contrast to a policy we endorse, transportation, public transportation. We rejected policies for tenant protection. I, I hear ya, and being the author, you, you have your own vocal.
Yeah.
Sensibility, I defer to those who, like you, see it as confusing, with that. All right, so I think we have agreement on the tenant protection paragraph, is that right?
So, use the staff version, do you want that heading?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right.
Does that exhaust all the?
I think it does.
That it's, okay. Scott?
Come on, can't we get some more controversy?
Yeah. 'Cause it's only nine o'clock. All right, are we, so we have a plan, right?
You have, we will make those changes and provide that, um, to the council and back to the planning commission. So the only other item on your agenda thing would be, when you show up on the twenty-third, there's an agreement on how you're going to make that presentation.
Yes, so, uh, staff will start, as usual. I am happy to give that background. There are a couple of things I might also bring up, and I wanna get approval on that, I'm not gonna, I wanna stick to us as a team here. One is, um, I'm inclined to make reference to the data that's come out, and I sent those two articles out to people. That's a big deal.
It is.
We had this trend, she start, I should say, steep, sharp rise in rents in this area, and things are changing. More supply's coming on the market, taking time, there's always a lag effect, but investors are saying, hey, see, I have a good place to build housing. There's money to be made, we're building it. We're getting a record number of new units coming on the market. We have for the last few years, but now it's really kicking in, and rents are going in, which corroborates the point, the broader point we're making in our analysis, which is, this is an economic question, this is our economic analysis. Supply, not just our opinion, but many experts are saying is the key to moderating rents and housing costs, and that's what's happening. So I think that's really timely and helpful for our presentation.
Can you make it, there's kind of a flip argument too, that even though it's increasing supply, for that supply to become affordable is going to take a significant amount of time. And if the rents are already substantially high, even when they get lowered, this, even that slight lowering is still going to be difficult or challenging for most people to make.
High, is your point?
It's still high.
Right.
So I mean, I think it's, and I think we've already recognized that supply is, is, is helpful, it's not the only answer, it's not going to, it's not the magic bullet.
But you can use it to support why we're recommending the strategy matrix that we are. Because we're, as a commission, I believe our goal was to, uh, provide the commissioners with information and a strategy recommendation, so they could prioritize what they do to de- bring development online in the city.
Right, and it occurs to me, you know, Debbie used the phrase silver bullet or magic bullet. There really, there are none, otherwise we, you know, we're one of many cities in the country with affordable housing problems. I've never seen a city that doesn't, that's growing anyway, that doesn't have affordable housing problems. The question is, how can you reduce the burden? How can you make it better? You're not gonna get rid of it. And from our analysis, it occurred to me that the two things that we've really embraced, and from what I've read, most economists do too, is density. And we're seeing that from what I just said, with the new units coming on, increase the supply with limited land. The other is transportation. And we've already made that mention. But I'd like to, to make the point that they actually kinda work together, and they've already, we've already adopted policies that reflect that, which is the TOD. We have higher density allowances in our transit-oriented district. Why? So, people can get to and. From more places around town. And spend less on transportation, because there's public transportation, we can walk the distance. And transportation actually does increase supply in effect, because now you have, any, any home, you know, consumer, housing consumer, not just has the immediate housing supply to draw from, but they have far more options in the area when you've got good public transportation. They're really working as for the same concept, and to the council's credit, and we've done it too in our zoning policies. And I think it makes sense to the council to hear it this way, is having a TOD with density incentives. Both are working to achieve that goal, and our analysis, widely shared economic analysis, is this helps the problem. Even if there's no silver bullet, these are the things. Non-subsidy ways. To, to improve the affordability issue. Does that make sense to people, that something you think would help the presentation?
And I ma- might add that you, uh, Kenmore's unique to that, because we've got the both away going right here, and that's the transportation corridor, and that's where all the.
Density should be.
Density should be, and it's a perfect match, whereas some places don't have that advantage. I mean, you know, and then we've got the, the suburbs, so, so to speak, where the single.
I think that's a great emphasis, because it also empowers the council looking on our recommendations from the matrix to get creative, and to, and I think it will actually stimulate the conversations that will include public comment and hearings. So I think that's an excellent, uh, way to structure your conversation.
So that leaves, what guy, what do you guys wanna take up? I wanna, I wanna just go with the first four pages, the context and the overview economically. Now we have the matrix, now we have the four proposals. And I had asked at the last meeting, are there, if there are ones that you wanna describe, choose one, and we'll spread this out. 'Cause I want the council to see what's actually happening, this was a team effort, and hearing from multiple people, please, that.
Well, unfortunately, I'm gonna talk first, I've been called out of town, and I'm not gonna be available. I'm really sad about it, and I'm not available to call in by phone either. So it is work-related, I'm very sorry. I'm out.
Shark Tank.
Shark Tank, I'm out.
All right. Mark?
Well, I will volunteer for EDUs.
I think that's a real strong one, I like. Scott?
I'd like to bring in some stakeholders in here. Builders, contractors, speculators, so to speak.
Yeah.
To what, they could, you know, tell us what's gonna work economically. I think that's where we, we need to hear from those, those people, because they know how to get it done. And, and so I, I don't know how that fits in with your, I, I think it's in the matrix, you know, what, what kind of strategies can, with density and, and trade-offs with the development rights on the, the, um, mobile homes to the density here, you know, they pay the landowner of the mobile homes to, to, you know, get them to be, uh, you know, like the. Like they did in the, the valley over there, where they bought the, they paid for the, the development rights.
Baffling?
Paid for the development rights, in, in the, there's, um, where they got the Skocker fields over there in, uh. Willow's Road, that area.
Yeah, it's kind of like sixty acres and down in that neck of the woods.
Right.
I think it's Redmond.
Right, yeah, they paid for those development rights, didn't they? I mean, that's how that works, from what I understand, is that you, you, you get bigger density here, and, and they, for that, they get to buy the right, the city gets to buy the rights over there with the, I, I'm not.
Density transfer, right?
What'd you call it?
A density transfer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's one of our four proposals.
Right.
So why don't you, here's my concern, I obviously agree with you about having more stakeholders speak to this issue, but at this stage, I think it would be difficult to manage that. We have this draft, and we're both, we, you know, this is something we've all agreed on with the draft, we don't know exactly what the stakeholders are gonna say. And we, I think, decided we're gonna leave that until the next step in this process, if the council gives us specific direction on priorities to implement. So, what, I'm, I'm not inclined to go for that, I mean, obviously, it's up to the commission, but if that tran- development transfer is one of your favorite proposals, I would say it would be a good one for you to describe to the council. Unless you're uncomfortable.
Well, no, no, I, 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 I'm, I'm fine with it, but I, I don't know what it involves, and.
Okay, Laurie?
I, the staff would probably help.
Yeah, maybe.
So we'll, we'll give an introduction, but the fourth, you have the council agenda bill in, uh, front of you, it's the last page. And I wonder, so Mark is gonna talk about ADUs, and Scott, if this last bullet, expanding density bonuses, adding density transfers, I, I think what you're saying is that you wanna look at a number of creative ways to, um, address affordable housing issues, uh, all revolving around the density question, and maybe what you wanna say is something like that, and then that you wanna bring in stakeholders, other stakeholders who can help sort out what are the best bonuses or credits or. I mean, I think I, that's what I heard you say, that you think that we need to mine the creative juices of all those people and come up with ideas for doing bullet point number four.
So you're just adding on to what staff's gonna describe as density tran- the density transfer proposal.
Right.
Does that make sense? Is that what you have in mind, Laurie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when is this presentation?
Monday, seven o'clock. This Monday?
No. Yeah, Monday, the twenty-third.
Is there a game?
No, there's no, there's no game, I just, I.
I'm pulling your legs, Scott, I'm pulling your leg.
I, I guess somebody's gonna have to give me a little support on that, because I.
We'll all be there. And I'll.
You sit next to me.
Summarize probably.
You hold my hand?
I'll hold your hand.
The top four items. And I think all you're really doing is adding the thoughts of the commission about this particular topic, things that you thought were important, like having people from the development community and others here to figure out which ones really work or don't work or.
Sure. If you're familiar with the sixty acres example, if you think it's suited, if it's a good example of what we're proposing, then Scott could talk about that.
I, I don't, I don't know if it is or, it isn't. I can't, can't say for sure right now.
Okay, anybody else want to go with explaining one of our proposals? Do you think it would make sense to stay with the top four or should we look a little deeper in the list? Well, like you've got a preference for one that's deeper? Not necessarily. But none of the top, but, none of the top four are necessarily grabbing you either. Okay. I hate to look deeper because then we're putting, if they want to bring it up. I would think that's your entree, but with the limited time and attention span and.
No, I think it's important that we at least.
Focus on the four before we go anywhere else. You're not obligated to say anything, so if you'd rather not, that's fine. We'll have staff describe those other.
Yeah, I don't have a strong point of view on, on the top four.
Okay. Okay, are we good? Anything else? We have our speaking roles. Everybody but Carol can be there? Good, that's okay. It happens? All right, so I think that satisfies that element of the agenda. Is that right? Okay. Agenda says adjournment. Is there any new business? No. There being no new business, I hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.